Hi, my name is Helen Owens and I'm here today for another episode of The She Compass Show, the show that helps you navigate your life. I'm here today with President Cohen and we're going to talk about a lot of different issues. How are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you. You could just call me Malia, though.
Oh, Malia! Wow, that's cool, we'll take it. Okay, how are you today, Malia?
I'm great, I'm excited that you guys are here. I'm honored that we are filming in the beautiful City Hall in San Francisco.
I love it.
I can't think of a better place to hold this interview.
I know, wouldn't that just be ironic? Because I'm a native San Franciscan, been living here all my life and I love San Francisco and I love what you're doing here in San Francisco.
That's something that we have in common, I'm a native also. I want to give a shout out to our new mayor, London Reed.
Oh, yes.
She's also a native San Franciscan, so I think it's really powerful that we're all coming together, this energy and this space and this time, San Franciscans rising up to lead San Francisco.
Oh, wow. And just the whole woman empowerment thing of that, just think about that. You and Mayor Breed seem to be pretty close.
Yes, we're good friends.
Isn't that wonderful? And that's a wonderful thing, too. I just love the whole thing. It's been exciting watching the whole process happen and it's been, for me, it's been personally exciting watching you grow.
Thank you.
We have a very long-term relationship, we're pretty good buds. So, this is, you know, it's a little funny having the conversation like this. This woman is incredible, she's, you just inspire so many. I have some pretty poignant questions to ask you, so I don't want to forget them. So, I want to know the impact that you think you may be having on young women right now and what is the message that you would like to convey to young women who may be trying to do the same thing you're doing and looking at you and looking at your career and watching you through this process? What advice do you think you could give?
You know, Helen, that's an interesting question and I think that that's one that I do get often and I probably have a different answer for every time I get asked.
Of course, yes, of course.
But I think the basic principle is the same. It is so humbling to walk down the street or to go someplace and see young girls, young children come up and just say, "I wrote a report on you, may I take a picture with you, you're my role model, I admire you." I mean, it is so humbling. Let me tell you how I got my start.
Okay.
See, my start actually starts in a very simple and humble place.
Yes.
It started when I was in the 3rd grade, I was on a tour of City Hall. My 3rd grade teacher, Ms. Nicolosi, took our class on a tour of this very building.
Wow.
And as you know, when you walk into the building, you see the grand staircase, you see the rotunda, I mean, it is awesome.
That's been my thing forever, it's beautiful. The building is just absolutely beautiful.
And I was inspired that day when I was 8 years old, I said, "I want to work here one day." I want to work here, it was just that simple. I didn't care what I did, where I was, what department, I didn't know any of that. I just wanted to be here. So, when I see these young children, these young girls in particular, and they come and they connect with me, I see myself in them. And I just tell them the truth, I tell them that they can do it. You've got to work hard, you'll have to study, there will be some sacrifices.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
As you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Being a businesswoman.
I just think that's so funny because we kind of have a similar story in that. Because, you know, when I lost my hair as a child, I was 11 years old, and it seemed like such a hardship at the time, but now, since then, it's just been so empowering. I've been empowering women for years, for over 40 years, to be exact, just really getting out there and saying. But when it first happened to me, the first thing I said to myself is, "You know what? I'm going to do hair, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to do hair and I'm going to do the best hair and I'm going to make hair for people so they have wonderful, beautiful hair." So, you know, it's great.
It's interesting how we found, both of us have found our calling like very early in life and haven't deviated from the path. And I'm going to tell you, even in the hard days, it makes it easy knowing I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing, I'm walking my purpose-driven life and I love what I do.
And isn't it wonderful to have other women to support you?
It is wonderful. It's wonderful to have all kinds of support, first of all, let's just be honest.
Yes, women, men.
That sisterhood is real.
Yeah, it is.
And, you know, for full disclosure for the folks that are listening and that are watching, Helen has had a very instrumental force on my life and I also want to recognize her sister, Jo. Both of these women were very instrumental early on in my mid-20s and helping shape me and guide me and encouraged me. And I think that that's what I look for and when I think about women, I think about myself. I'm constantly nurturing, constantly growing. And you know what, sometimes it's not always a positive word. Lord knows that Jo had some very critical words that have made me the better woman that I am today because she kept it real and sometimes that's what you need.
Oh, yeah, we know how Mama Jo works. But you know what, it's all in the design, isn't it?
It is true.
When you go back and look at it, some of the things that may seem like it's cracking down, you go back and look and say, "Thank God," because if someone hadn't did that, then I wouldn't be the woman I am right now.
Right.
And isn't that a wonderful thing? And just think about for us, how wonderful it is for us to see where you are. Oh, my goodness gracious, how proud am I as a woman and as a friend to just see you in this position, it's wonderful.
Thank you, I'm grateful to be able to serve San Francisco in this way. As you know, I'm transitioning from the local level into the state level, so I'm working very hard on my upcoming election in November to transition to the statewide. But for me, it's about taking everyone, every little story, every constituent representing Baby Hunters Point, Pachelo Hill, Vis Valley neighborhoods, these are working-class neighborhoods, right?
Hardworking, yes.
But taking that and their stories with me as I continue to go forward.
Isn't that beautiful?
That's what you've done, you taught me that.
Oh, yeah.
You taught me that.
Oh, yeah, that's, heck, yeah, I forgot about that, that's true. Sometimes the things that we do, we forget because we're just trying, and that's what I'm talking about, when you're just trying to love on another woman, man, whatever it may be, and you're trying to, and this is what I'm saying, everybody has a story and the wonderful thing about it is that I try to tell everybody, everyone can shape someone in some way, everyone can contribute. Because if you think about the people that have shaped you and molded you and look at the woman you are and now you're doing that, it's almost funny to me, I can't even imagine, so much time has passed, you know? And look at you and look what you're doing and look at all the great things you're doing. And so, I think that's a great thing to say to young women because it does have to live in you and there is a lot of sacrifice.
That's true. You and I both know that, like, you and I are like the front women, right?
Oh, yeah.
We are in the front.
Definitely.
But there is a whole team of folks, a talented folks that stand behind us.
Oh, yeah.
You know, whether they're doing their hair, our makeup, scheduling, attending meetings, in my case, attending meetings on my behalf. I mean, there are opportunities that I look to train and to uplift women, every opportunity. You know, in politics, what's unique is that there are a lot of male consultants.
Oh, yes.
A lot of male consultants make a lot of money off of candidates. And I made a decision very early on that if I'm going to be, if people are going to be making money off of me, I want these to be women. And I pay careful attention to really hiring consultants that are women of color. And so, you'll see that reflected in my values, that values reflected in my everyday team, my staff in City Hall, my campaign staff, my consultants, they are all coming from communities of color, non-traditional people that you wouldn't normally see when you're thinking about the political scene.
Yes, what a wonderful thing, too, that you're doing because these kind of things are not typically done, you know? I mean, when you think about where you came from and where you're going and taking the people along with you that helped you or either looking back and saying, "What can I do to empower someone else?" And there you go, right there, so you're doing so much already.
You know, the greatest, Oprah said this once, "See, you might be the next great thing since Oprah." Oprah said that she evaluated her success by not how many millions she made, but how many millionaires she made, right?
Millionaires she made, that's right.
And I think about that in my own world, how many people am I getting elected? How many people am I getting on a board and a commission? Because that pipeline is what changes the face of leadership, it changes the dynamic.
It does, yes.
And you and the work that you're doing in the beauty industry, makeovers.
Making people feel good, you know, standing behind women who otherwise feel like they don't have a home and they don't look good or they don't, they're beautiful women, but when your spirit's broken, everything's broken. So, your hair is your crown and glory and when you feel good, everything around you moves.
That's true.
Yes, and when women don't feel good, they don't know how to, you know, kind of relegate themselves in different situations. They may have, I've ran across a lot of women with a lot of power, but the thing about it is when they feel their low self-esteem and then you watch them just flourish and you're looking at them and it's like, "Wow, wow, that's all you needed, just that little boost?"
Yeah.
And that's what you're doing, isn't that wonderful? So, yes.
More questions?
More questions.
Okay.
So, President of the Board of Supervisors, tell me a little bit about your job, what do you do?
Sure. So, first and foremost, I'm a public servant. A lot of people try to say it's a politician, I prefer public servants because that's really what brings me to the table, is a desire to serve. And the way San Francisco is organized is that there are 11 members that make up the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. We are each responsible for a certain portion, certain neighborhoods of a city and we represent approximately 70,000 residents. And the Board of Supervisors is very simple, it's the legislative arm of government. So, what we do is we come together every week, Tuesdays at 2:00 and we have an agenda where we're discussing ordinances. And an ordinance is a law and a resolution is a law, it's a non-binding statement that we pass. And so, one of the most significant pieces of legislation that we pass on the Board of Supervisors is actually the budget. And I'm also Chair of the Budget Committee and so that budget is a statement of our city values, it's a statement of everything that is important to us. It says how much we want the Department of Public Health to have, how much we want the airport, or excuse me, how much we want the Health and Human Services to have and how much the Police Department. So, it's an important function because you have the Mayor's Office on one hand, which is the executive.
Okay.
All right, think about that, the CEO.
All righty.
All right, the executive branch. And then you have the Board of Supervisors, which are the legislative branch, which is a body that is made up of representatives that represent the people.
I understand.
And so, when the people have issues, they come to the Board of Supervisors and we, as their leaders, elected representatives, solve problems. So, I've solved really big problems, right? Everything from bringing police reform to the Police Department to my next-door neighbor's dog won't stop barking, to the tree keeps, my neighbor's tree keeps dropping fruit on my yard.
Wow.
To, yes, to making sure that Muni has good stop locations in the neighborhood. So, one neighborhood is not getting more resources than another neighborhood.
Wow, that's a lot.
It's exciting, though, it's very, very dynamic, it is a lot. And it's full-time work.
Yeah, I can only imagine.
And we serve two four-year terms, so it's a total of eight years. And as of right now, I'm in my eighth year, my time is winding down and so I'm going to be what they call "terming off," meaning my board service is complete and it's time for me to move on and I will have to run for another position in another place.
Wow.
So, that's primarily the function of the Board of Supervisors, it's a very powerful position, it's moving a lot of things, a lot of legislation, a lot of thoughts, it's shaping, it's helping us figure out what we're building in terms of housing and where we are building it, everything comes through the Board of Supervisors.
So, through all of that, that's a lot, as I said, that's a lot. So, how do you feel, how you feel like you're doing?
Well, I love what I'm doing, first of all, and I don't need any outside validation, but it's nice when voters are like, "Yes, I agree with you" and they support you.
Yes, most definitely.
So, there's two ways that we do legislation. We can do it at the Board of Supervisors or we can bring legislation to voters and I've done both and I've been actually very successful. I've put a tax on sugary beverages and people say, "Well, why would you tax sodas?" And I say, "Well, sodas are the number one way that we add sugar into our bodies." And the reason why I went after the soda industry is because they're targeting Black and Latinos and Pacific Islanders. And people are dying of preventable diseases. And not to mention that the city and county is spending an exorbitant amount of money trying to heal people when given the right tools, they can make better decisions for themselves.
Oh, you hurt them to heal them?
Yes. You see, it's disjointed.
I see that, yeah.
We restrict the sales of flavored tobacco, it's another piece of legislation. You remember Mario Woods?
Yes.
When Mario Woods was killed in December of 2015? Well, you know, as a result of that shooting that was in my district in the Baby Hunters Point neighborhood, it got me thinking like we need to change our use of force policies.
Wow.
So, this job allows me to walk out in the streets, I could be at Walgreens, I could be at a restaurant, I could be driving and I could see something that's wrong and be able to make a phone call or work to introduce legislation to make that change, to make that happen. Public housing, making sure that people are living in safe, habitable public housing. I don't want mold, I don't want broken stairs, I don't want broken boarded-up windows.
So, you are changing, you're moving and shaking some things.
We, yeah, this is a blessing because you really, in local government, you have a chance to connect with people's lives, giving them everything from like a backpack for school to after-school programs.
Wow.
To programs that help those that have been incarcerated.
Yes.
Getting back into the community, making sure that they have jobs.
Really helping.
Yeah.
Really knowing that you are helping and really knowing that you're changing lives.
Yeah.
Wonderful, I just wanted to know what that description was.
Now you know.
Now I know, if you don't know, now you know. Women of color, challenges, what challenges do you face as a woman of color in the position that you're in?
I think there's all kinds of challenges that I face, I mean, you know, we were talking earlier off-camera about the result of Serena Williams and in the competition, the match over the previous weekend.
Yes.
And I think that it was really amazing how through it all, Serena has been criticized on her looks, the shape of her body.
Oh, my goodness.
Whether she demonstrated aggressive behavior or not and being, and this whole conversation has forced us to take a critical look through a lens of, to examine how double standards exist.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And in the world of politics, double standards do and still exist. In my media coverage, oftentimes they will, they go above and out of their way to let a reader know that I'm African-American, I could be talking about an issue that has to do about finance, I'm Chair of the Budget Committee, so I'm often talking about finance and the city's structure. And they'll say Supervisor Cohen, or President Cohen, who is African-American, blah, blah, blah. And I had to take issue with the editor to ask, "Why do you do this?" And as a result, they have stopped doing it, but it wasn't until you called their attention to it. And I used other examples, you don't say Supervisor Campos, who is Latino, or Supervisor Tang, who is Chinese-American. It was only described in when talking about a specific subject, of course, when we're talking about crime and police matters. And I consider that to be a dog whistle, a calling to people just to say, "This is who she is," to categorize me or place me in a box. Now, the other place where there's real racism and sexism that exists is in fundraising.
Wow.
Female candidates systematically, and there is empirical data to support this, have a more difficult time raising money than their male candidates, even when they're qualified, even when they're the most knowledgeable on an issue. And I have experienced that, I, you know, we all run in the same election cycle and I ask a same donor for some money and they give me less than what they've given my male counterparts. And then I then have to go back and say, "Hey, I noticed that you gave my colleague or so-and-so more money than me."
So, where am I less valued?
Why am I less valued? And it does manifest in how you're covered in the media, how your contributions are given, how you are introduced, how people, where they see you, I mean, like, it really, it's insidious.
Oh, wow, I didn't imagine, you know, I...
It's there.
Wow, and it's apparent. Yeah, we were, you know, we did a podcast yesterday about Serena and I, you know, I hit on some very valuable subjects and to say that, that woman had to have so much power to even be in the position she is right now, being one of the best ever and taking the criticism. On top of that, can you, you know, can you kind of get, well, we can both get there, we can both go there and sit in that seat and say, "It's already hard enough being a woman and being an African-American woman and then all of the bad things people say, that's hard, that must be double hard."
It is, and you know, you think about the level of criticism and if you notice, they always, those that are criticizing, take it a step further and they make it personal towards an attack on her physical body. They've attacked, I'm sure they've attacked you on your look.
Oh, yes, of course, many times, yeah.
And whereas, instead of being critical of the art, being critical of her game, being critical of my policy, they take it and they kneel it down to a personal level, being a woman, being irate, being imbalanced, you know, I mean, like, there's so many different code words.
We can take that to so many levels, yeah, and there are. And then it's just blatant, too, it's blatant, so that's a real hard one, but thank you for being honest about that.
My pleasure.
You're always honest and I love that.
It's important for us to be honest because that's how other women will continue to grow.
Oh, yes, if we're not honest with who we are ourselves, how can we teach other people how to just know that it's okay? It's okay to come out and say, "I'm not okay with this or I'm not okay with that," because then it changes things. And I said, yesterday in the podcast, I said that even though she didn't win and this didn't happen, she may have changed things somewhere.
She'll always be a winner, though.
That's right, oh. I was going to say, I elaborated on that, I said Muhammad Ali, it didn't matter if he lost or he won, he was still beautiful, right? I am the best.
Yes.
And she knows that.
And you remember, they criticized Muhammad Ali when he would, when he would say these very positive, life-affirming phrases about himself or his people.
That's right.
And they tried to criticize him on that.
Yes, and why can't we uplift our people without it being something, you know, somebody's criticizing? It's okay for everybody else, right? So, it should be okay for us.
It is okay.
Yeah, so, that's great, very, thank you so much for answering that question like you did, it's wonderful. Okay, women supporting women, we're going to talk a little bit about Mayor Breed, your friendship.
Absolutely.
I, as I said, I watched this whole beautiful thing and I said, "There must be a friendship there and it must be pretty powerful, two women supporting each other that way."
When you have gone through some ish, I remember this is a PG show, right? When you go through some ish and you go through the fire with somebody, it really does strengthen the bond.
Yes.
She and I have weathered tremendous storms together.
I can only imagine.
Protests, rallies, people coming into the chamber protesting and shutting it down, this is when she was President of the Board of Supervisors. She getting elected when there was very little support for her, I was elected when there was little support for me and really just busting out of the seams, onto the scene, exceeding people's expectations. And so, that is certainly where we have a bond and we knew each other before we were members and before we served. And I have supported her through her career.
I saw that.
And have been that counterbalance. When she couldn't say something negative or critical, I could and I did.
We had the President to fight for it.
Yes.
And listen, I know you, so I just said, "There she goes."
Yes, you know me, because everyone has a position to play.
That's right.
And sometimes you need to be gracious and magnanimous and sometimes you need someone to kick some...
Some, some...
And so, we have fluctuated between these two roles for each other, she's been a vote that I've been able to count on and sometimes we have not seen things eye to eye, but the sisterhood is strong enough to where we can agree to disagree.
Yes, and isn't that, isn't that what sisterhood is all about?
That is what it's all about.
If you're going to just be agreeing all the time, then that's not real.
Right.
Sisterhood is real, that's a real bond you feel with another woman or, as you said, another person and it's real.
It is real.
And so, that's a beautiful thing.
And it allows you to grow, you're not, there aren't restraints or constraints put on you, I don't say, "London, you're getting too big," but you know, I am that voice that says, "Hey, that's crazy, why would you say something like that?"
Right.
Or, "Hey, sister, you're looking good, I like what you're doing there, I like your style." Or, you know, "You got a little lipstick on your teeth right here." That's, I mean, that's the level of sisterhood, right? Someone that you can cry with.
Count on.
That you can count on, that you can be vulnerable with.
That's right.
Because in our job, you always have to be strong or present some kind of a omnipresence of strength.
Yes.
And the reality is that we're human, we have fragile moments, we have disappointments, her grandmother passed away during her board service, a woman who was influential and raised her and she was, you know, I was there.
That breaks you.
It does.
And you need, I can't even imagine the support, so, and of course, I know you and you're such a, you've been such a good friend and that's you, that's if I talk about...
Maybe loyal to a fault, but I don't, if that is such a thing, I don't know. I don't know if it's such a thing, but definitely loyal and I certainly ride and die for those that have been with me from the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
And you are among that, family is among that, close friends from high school, elementary school that I still remain in touch with, friends from college, I mean, it's a small group.
Well, you're, as you probably know, the more you go up, the smaller your group becomes, only because then you're weeding out, you know who's real, you know who is really there for you and so, and we need that support in the jobs that we do because they're hard and we're working constant and that's hard. And so, outside of that, we need that loving and that kindness, but it needs to be real for us.
That's true.
And you know, as you get older, you start realizing that that thing is solid, so when you see it, when you hear it, when you feel it, it needs to be real or it needs to be nothing. And back in my day, they would say, "Is this live or is this Memorex?" So, I'd say, "This needs to be live." So, gosh, I just can't tell you how proud I am of you.
We're having a good time over here, ladies and gentlemen.
We're having a good time.
If you can't tell.
We're just shooting it if you guys don't like it.
This is like a conversation that we would normally have on the couch or in the shop.
Yes, in the chair.
Yep, just naturally flowing, asking questions.
Just flowing and asking our questions and doing our thing and talking real talk and that's, you know, and isn't it funny? And even in this, this is real, there's no way I could ever do an interview with you, it does not be.
See, today we're just talking about leadership or female empowerment, next show we'll talk about fashion.
Oh, yeah.
We'll talk about music and fashion.
We're going to have a fashion blog.
Talk about that Cardi B fight that happened over the weekend.
Oh, yeah, isn't it? And you know, and even...
Talk about sisterhood.
Even with that, and that's why I think that, you know, the issues for me is watching young women being so mean to each other, that's another thing, it's like, why can't we just love on each other? One woman can be beautiful in her way and another be beautiful in her way, we can both, there's enough room for everybody.
That is true.
There's enough room for Cardi B and...
Nicki Minaj.
Nicki Minaj. They can, you know, they can, they can come together and have enough room.
You know, but I think that sometimes society creates a space.
Oh, yeah.
Or an idea that you can only, there's only room for one.
Only room for one at a time.
There's only room for one and then they try to put you together and they want you, they want you to explode. They tried to do that to London and I when she first got on the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, my gosh.
They were like, "Supervisor Cohen, I heard you don't like London Breed or you didn't support London, what's it going to be like on the Board of Supervisors?" And I said, "I'm going to work with everybody, she's going to be, she's my sister before this and will be after this." But it's just another example how you can be sucked into that crazy, false narrative that crazy, false narrative that there's only room for one.
The gossip.
The gossip.
The gossip that's out there is real. And the thing of it is, is sad. Because if we say we want one thing, but we do a different thing, right? It's like, we'd rather see two women feud, but we're saying women empowerment. And when you were really about women empowerment, which you have always been. You've always been really about that. Really supporting another woman, really standing up for another woman and really getting out there and saying, look, I'm for you. I'm ride and die for you. I'm right here for you. We both have that same ethic. And so to watch it, it's sad for me. To watch it, it's really sad for me.
It is sad.
Yeah.
It is sad, but it is... I guess you can't talk about the sisterhood and not even acknowledge that sometimes that there are catty and small moments.
Oh, yeah.
Within the sisterhood.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, we can need to...
Most definitely.
Build upon that and grow from those examples.
Build upon it, grow on it, and kick it and say, I have no room for you.
Yeah, that's right.
And then that next woman can say, you know what? Instead of watching that bad example, she can say, I watched this good example. I have a lot more coming from this than that. So working together, right?
That's it. That's what it's about.
Alrighty.
Working together.
So I want to know... This is a very important question. I want to know if you could rewrite your childhood. What would you do different, if anything?
You know, I actually had a really good childhood. I had fun growing up here in the streets of San Francisco. I had two amazing parents that dedicated their lives. They're married and we grew up in a home. I have four younger sisters. And so for me, the home life was... I have fond memories.
Yes.
You know, there wasn't a lot of chaos. It was very stable. It wasn't bickering. You know, they... My parents went above and out of their way to support us, whether we were doing gymnastics. I played the violin in the orchestra. They came to concerts. I mean, even till this day, I just spoke at UC Berkeley two weeks ago. My sister pulled together a speaking series. This is through the Ha School of Business. This is my sister that's the doctor, the researcher.
Oh, yes.
And she pulled this together. She had business students, young academics. And then I looked in the back of the room and there was my mother and father. And I said, Jenny... Jenny, did you know Mom and Dad are here? She's like, yeah, I invited them. And then I got nervous. Well, Mom and Dad are still there.
They're right there.
They really are.
For every moment.
They are.
And isn't that wonderful? Isn't that wonderful? Because this question, I ask this question quite a bit. And there are so many people that go through the gamut and say, I wish I could have changed this, 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 and this. And I always take a very good look at this question that depending on where you are in your life, even if your childhood wasn't great, could you...
It doesn't define you.
Would you change that? Because it may be the reason why you are who you are.
That's true.
Whether good or bad. So there... I always say, some of the worst moments of my life have made me the woman that I am, have made me stronger. So some of this, you know, we take from it and say, you know, there are people say, I would have changed this. I'm going to change that. I would have changed that. Even on some of their good moments, they say, ah, it was okay. But I don't, you know, if I could avoid that. And I say, well, do you think you would be sitting in this chair?
I think I would be. But let me tell you what I... The way I interpret that question. There's very little... I can't even think of one instance that I would rewrite. But I see my job as making sure that my constituents or the young people in my city have that stability. So it's my job to pass it on. So I want to make sure that that library is open for them.
Isn't it nice?
The things that, you know, my father took us and taught us how to ride a bike. So if your father's not able to take you to ride a bike, there's 100 Black Men Organization that I partner with that will be able to help you. There is a mentorship, a nonprofit that is active in San Francisco, in the Bayview in particular, will help with that. So yes, you may not have it organically like I had it, but I know how to go and piecemeal and put those resources together so that the young person can be embraced and we, as a community, can wrap around. Yes, I didn't go hungry. But you know what I did do? I made sure that there's a pantry in elementary schools in the Bayview community. So parents can go with dignity, no shame, and go get that food for their child and for their family. So, you know, that's probably a better way to balance out and to answer your question. And I recognize that we are fortunate and we are blessed. And I just do my due diligence and I just pay it forward. And I really just try to stay humble and not forget.
And you are... Oh, my. You are humble. You are a humble young lady.
Humble, but hungry. Hungry. Still working hard, still doing the work, right?
Yeah, of course.
Like you.
Oh, yeah. We don't stop. We don't stop. We're hungry and we don't stop. We just keep going. And that... And isn't that a beautiful thing? And it's wonderful when you... I'm quite sure when you go back sometime to the community and you see somebody that you've changed the life of a young person.
That's true.
Isn't that wonderful to see? And they say, oh, that's why I didn't want to take that picture with you. You helped me.
They're like, you helped me find housing. You helped me bury my son. I mean, like, it's just crazy, some of the things. I called your office and you helped me get... Was it, I think it was the water turned back on or something? I mean, you know.
Hey.
People come from different walks of life.
But isn't that a beautiful thing? Because that's the thing that warms my heart the most, helping.
That's why I'm here.
Turning over and giving back. Yeah, that is why you're here. And you're doing a fabulous job at it. And I just love... You know me. I'm all...
I do know that.
President Cohen is like, I am for you 100,000%. I mean, you just...
It's mutual.
Yes.
The folks are going to get sick of hearing us.
I know.
Love on each other.
Why don't you guys switch up, okay? We know you love each other. Go on to the next question. We know what's going on. Hey, and you know what? Guess what? I'm so out of questions. So we're just going to talk because... So you've talked... You've pretty much hit on so many things. And so that's what's going on. So do you have something going on that you want us to know?
Well, I think the main thing that I want people to remember is that we've got upcoming midterm elections. No matter what city or county you're living in, please vote. It's incredibly important. As you have seen in recent election cycles, that these votes count. Every vote counts.
Every vote.
And you're starting to see smaller and smaller margins where individual votes are making the difference. And I want to acknowledge that we are really at a really interesting time. Yes, Trump has done a job on this country.
Well, I was going to elaborate on that. I've talked to many people that don't think that their vote counts anymore. So we are saying...
They couldn't be more wrong.
Okay.
It counts more so today than ever before. Think about this. Andrew Gillum, first African-American black man to win a primary in the state of Florida. Florida has always been a red state. And now we have an opportunity to flip it into a blue state. But that we're making history. And that's just Andrew in...
Well, you know, me and Joe was just talking about that.
Really?
Yeah, we were.
Everybody should be talking about it. Then there's Stacey Abrams in Georgia. Who could be the first governor, African-American female governor for the state of Georgia. And then there is... There's one more in... Running in the state of Maryland.
I'm not sure. Do we have that name by any chance?
I know it. Hold on, I got to think about it. It's a...
It's okay. Yeah. We'll go back to it. It's hard to remember names.
We'll cut back. We'll get there. But Maryland, Georgia, and Florida have a chance to make history and have a...
So your vote does count.
Every vote counts. Because these margins are very slow. Now, you know what pushed Andrew Gillum over the top? Was that fam, you, family. Those thousands and thousands
Wow.
of alumni came out and voted. You know, we'll come out and vote when we're motivated.
That's right. You're right. Motivation is the key.
And that's just... Those are just three examples in the African-American community. There's the first Muslim that's going to be elected in Michigan. I mean, like, there is a profound... A woman that won the primary, a Latina woman from the Bronx.
Oh, yes. I did know that. I did know that. I think people are fed up. I think people are tired.
You think?
I think they're tired. I think they're done.
And they're also scared.
Yeah, very scared. Well, it's a scary time.
Well, I think the people that are scared are the ones that voted for Trump.
That's right.
Because, you know, the mantra of...
It's like an uprising.
Of being homophobic, being uprising, being... Having... Trying to have leadership remain monolithic, white and male. That is not reflective of this country.
No, it's not.
That's what people are fed up about.
No, it's not. It's not. I mean, we have every national... It's a melting pot. And San Francisco is one big melting pot. Everyone's here. I mean, come on.
Even old, good old progressive San Francisco could learn, could be a little bit more tolerant and more embracing. I mean, everyone can continue to better their best. We... I agree, we are one of the better cities, yes.
Yeah.
I might be biased.
I love me some San Francisco.
But even there's still room. There's still room for us to grow.
There is a lot. Well, it's... If you're not growing...
Yeah, you're dying.
Yeah, right. We have to keep growing, right?
That's true.
Wow. Well, this has been one wonderful conversation. I have to say that I'm in awe. Because this young lady here and her title and her job and what she's doing for women, men, children, and doing for the city of San Francisco is astonishing. And you know, you don't have to pat your own back. I'll do that for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're doing great. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
So once again, we are here at the She Compass Show. And, oh, let's elaborate a little bit on the book. What did you think about the book?
That's right.
What did you think about the book?
I loved it. As a matter of fact, I received it, I remember, on a Wednesday. And I read it in one weekend. It was an easy read. And the stories, the anecdotal stories were relatable. I didn't hear my story. I wasn't looking for my own personal story. That's like your worst fear, your business is in a book, published thousands, thousands of copies. But you did a good job. If it is in there...
You don't know.
You did a good job protecting the innocent and the identity.
My job is to protect the innocent, yes.
But it was amazing. It was... It's easy. People should get a copy of this.
Well, you know, the funny thing, the 15 life lessons that I just kind of chose randomly, there's so many hundreds of them. And I just tried to pinpoint the ones that I thought might be really good to teach. Teach women how to be better to each other. And teach people in general that no matter where you come from, it's about where you're going. It's about what your passion is, what your love of life is. And anything you want to do, as you can see from the example, sitting at the table. If you work hard enough, you may have some sacrifice. But you can do it. So the book is actually on Amazon. It's called Finding Our She Compass. And I've had a wonderful day today.
Thank you. I have, too.
I've had a wonderful time. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
I would just like to say thank you. I'm grateful for an opportunity to sit at the table with you in a professional way. I think we sit around tables as girlfriends. But now it's nice to support your endeavor as you transition.
I thank you so much for this.
Now as an author. Now we need to get you to become an award-winning author. I'm sure Joe is working on that.
Yes. Actually, I've won two awards.
Oh, congratulations. I didn't know that.
I won two awards.
Tell us about them.
Oh, yeah. In San Francisco. At the San Francisco Book Festival.
I didn't... We should bring you into the chamber and celebrate you as one of our own. I know. We need to hype this up.
I won two awards, yeah, right here in San Francisco.
Congratulations.
It was wonderful. I couldn't believe it. It was a wonderful day or night. We were right there at Fisher's Wharf. And it was the San Francisco Book Festival. And won two awards, honorable mention as well. And a Booker Award, right? Two, an honorable mention. Yeah, and two categories. It was great.
That's amazing.
And isn't that amazing?
You know, one of the things that I love at some point to talk about is like, how do you write a book? That's something like, I read a lot. Because I read these books. But I wonder, how do people just sit down and just like pour out everything? And you know, the ideas are organized and then they are on the page.
It takes... Listen, you have a great mind. I think that the thing of it is, is when you think about writing a book, it is hard. Because then you're taking a... You're not only taking a look at your life, but you're taking a look at yourself. And anytime you have to be critical... But I had a lot of great help. Joe Owens, oh my God, Mama Mama, helped me out greatly. And...
I could just see Joe locking you in a room and saying, you don't get any food or water until I get a chapter.
Beating me over the head. You're right. That's how it happened. And so I can't tell real people how to write a book because you don't want to know what I had to do.
I can hear Joe, Mama, you need to go sit down and write this book right now and finish it.
You don't do nothing else. Don't even move before you write this book.
No bathroom breaks.
No bathroom breaks, no dinner. And you know I like my food. So, yeah, that's kind of how I got it done. So I would say you could do it in a much gentler, easier way when you're getting ready to do it.
Right. Let me just say this.
Yes.
All projects managed by Joe Owens get done.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they get done by a hook or crook. And you're going to get whipped. Yeah. So this has been wonderful.
It has been. Thank you so much.
I thank you so much. And I love you so much. I know this is a different kind of interview, but this is the way it is. Sisterhood is live and real. So when you think about it, support another woman. And you can watch great things happen in her life and great things happen in your life. And isn't that wonderful to share? So there is enough room for more than one of us to do great things.
That's true.
So signing out. Thanks. Peace. And thanks for joining the She Compass Show today.